Okay, it's seven o'clock. Everybody's so quiet. We just as well get going. I'd like to call this meeting of the Silver Falls School Board to order and please don't attend, please. We're gonna jump right into our discussion items. District Food Services Program Report, Vandy and Sue Ann.
Good evening.
Hello, so there's going to be a PowerPoint behind you guys.
Do you want to move?
You can keep looking at me if you want. Better. So Sue Ann and I are here to answer any questions you might have with regard to our food services operation and in preparation for your consideration of the extension of the contract next month. So Sue Ann and I have split up the presentation, but don't hesitate to ask any questions as we go along. So just to review our timeline, February of this year, Sadexo began working with the Silver Falls School District. They spent this first month preparing to take over operations in terms of food services. On March 1, they spent that time trying to figure out how to use up our remaining inventory and also planning for their implementation of their systems on March 1. And so March 1 is when Sadexo assumes the operations in terms of ordering the food, delivering the food, you know, and all of that stuff, and working with our cooks to provide the meals for our kids. March 12, the food service staff met with myself. They had had a meeting the week prior to that to talk about some things that were going well and other things that were not going well, and they had some conservative questions. And they had a really nice list of topics to cover, and so we met with them on March 12 and talked about that, which include the logistics of their duties because their workload had increased because of a different product and a different way of doing business. And we came out of that meeting with my task of addressing some issues over spring break, which included increasing the cooks' hours at Eugene Field by an additional hour a day to figure out a different system for deliveries on Mondays, and then hiring a three-hour temporary cook up at Mark Twain to assist with the production up there. And several of these issues, according to the report I received, were things that had occurred off and on in terms of not having enough time to prepare meals and the food even when we had the program in-house. And so with the changes, it just kind of made that a consistent practice every day that they were not having enough time. So we addressed that right away. And then April 30 was the Sadexo's 36 Student Contact Day for Providing Services. So really, when we're talking about all of these issues that we're looking at, we have a company that's been here for 36 days.
Okay, so some of the things that I implemented fairly quickly was we started doing, we had monthly staff meetings where I have all the cooks come together, and we did have some additional training days that we offered on early release days and one on a non-contact student day that we offered. In the monthly staff meetings, I initially and continue to do, give the cooks their new menus for each month. We've gone over the menus. I've given them their production records, which were new to them, and worked with them on teaching them how to fill out the production records, and then just answering any questions that they had concerning the new look to the menu, some of the new menu items that we introduced, as well as just any concerns or questions that they have had for food services for Sadexo. And then I have been, I go out to individualized assessments of each location. I spend the majority of my days, I start out the day at the high school, and then I go out to different sites. And I spend a lot of time with, at each site, one to two sites per day between during their working hours, you know, talking to the ladies, making sure that they have any questions that they have that I can answer, or that I can work with them, help them, and just spending quality time out in schools with them, helping them. In the 36-plus days we've been here, we've spent $3,000 to $4,000 on utility carts, service equipment, small wares, and we have a list here of cutting boards, aprons, office supplies, multiple things that we, that I've brought in to help, you know, make their job more successful. Are we 100%? No. And it's just, that's just a continuous growing process to continue to bring equipment and repairing equipment that they have existing in their kitchens to help them be more successful in their jobs.
So the first goal that the board had in terms of consideration when they were looking at bringing a contract company on was to increase student participation. So in the 36 days that Sadexo spent on-site, you'll see that the district average for daily lunch participation counts have increased by 6%. So in February, we averaged, or we had 1,180 meals served at lunchtime, and in April, we were at the 1,252 mark. So that's an additional 72 lunches every day.
Is that district-wide?
This is a district-wide goal, district-wide and county. We have not broken it out school by school at this point, but that is something that we'll be working on. Yeah.
Is there any of that, I heard something the other night about double counting. Is any of that essentially to find two meals when it used to be up to 100? I wasn't quite sure what that was, but there was, people were mentioning that maybe the number had gained a little bit, not.
These are actually reimbursable lunch counts. So these are, this is 1,252 that we have at the end of April is just the federal reimbursable. We can't, a second meal is not a reimbursable meal.
Okay. So that's, because we heard comments, we heard some people say that the count might be up at the participation numbers. Is this participation numbers or is this?
This is reimbursable.
These is reimbursable participation numbers.
Free and reduced.
Free and reduced.
Free and paid.
And paid. But what they're talking about is that where it's down is that prior to Sadexo coming in, we were selling all the cart items that really should have been entree items. So a kid could buy an entree-sized sandwich or an entree-sized sliced pizza for $1.15, when in theory, to be compliant with federal regulations, we should have been selling it for $3, which then includes the fruit or vegetable and the drink. And so kids aren't going to pay $3 for a piece of pizza now, even though they get other things with it.
Yeah.
But that, and we'll talk about that, that's part of being in compliance, that what we were doing was not in compliance.
So just want to clarify, this is all meals, not just free and reduced?
Correct.
Free and reduced and paid.
And paid. But if I go through a second time, then this we can, like if I, if I want to buy two. Okay. And then these are the average daily breakfast participation counts. So again, we're up about 1.6%. And Sue Ann, if you want to address the.
Yeah, in February, our reimbursable breakfast count was, district-wide was 423. March, first week of March is National Breakfast Month, and so we offered free breakfast to all students for the whole week of, first week of March. And so as you can see, our counts went up to 523, but then in April, it's back down, still higher than February, but back down a little bit because of the free breakfast in March definitely, you know, jumped that up, but then going back, stabilized back in April.
So we have some additional comparisons. If you look at April 2014 compared to this April, again, it's an overall increase of 60, just over 64 and 1/2 meals per day, so that's just over 5%. At the previous, at the board meeting last week, there was a statement made that at Robert Frost, you know, they just looked at their, I think at their point-of-sale operation and made a comparison from February to March, and I believe the statement was that they were down about 500 meal counts between the two months. But what was not taken into consideration was that March had fewer student contact days because we had spring break and grading days, so we had six fewer serving days. And so really, if, yes, we were down 500 because there were six fewer days, but if you compare the day-to-day participation from a day in February to a day in March, they were still up by almost 20 meals per day. So your second goal in looking at contracting with Sadexo was the idea of being in full compliance with the federal nutrition requirements and the state rules.
So that's in the high school, that is our biggest change that we've made to become compliant with the National School Lunch Program. We've taken away the, turn the à la carte, or an entree, we said we're selling it à la carte, into a full meal purchase. And that is the, a student has to take four out of five components for lunch, three out of five, I'm sorry, excuse me, three out of five. And then another side to that is, is that if we, if we are at some point in the future to go to a à la carte, or a, as the state calls it now, a smart snack category, that all the food items have to be run through a smart snack calculator the state provides for us, and it has to meet those nutritional guidelines to be able to sell anything in the smart snack category, which is the same as à la carte.
So you could have a smart snack sandwich, which would be smaller than an entree sandwich, but it would be cheaper.
Yeah. And in that, and that as well, it is not a reimbursable meal. It's just a, like you'd say, like you've called it an à la carte item, and it's not reimbursable.
So it's not reimbursable, we still have to abide by guidelines?
Correct.
And that's why I think a lot of schools don't offer the smart snack items, because it's a smaller portion, the kids are still hungry, and they're, by the time they eat two sandwiches at the smart snack prices, they could have bought a full meal if they were willing to eat vegetables and salad and move along with their slice of pizza or their burger.
And the sandwich for the snack would be smaller?
Yes.
They have nutritional regulations that go along with those as well. And our goal, and our goal is to educate children and to teach children to eat, you know, make good choices and eat healthy, and you know, and the whole point of the program is to, you know, encourage our children to eat fruits and vegetables with those meals.
And I did, I went down to the high school on Friday, and I did see some, I watched a lot of kids on their trays, and they had their piece of pizza with their entree, but then a lot of them, you know, had salad and an apple, and they were, so I've heard, you know, it's been a learning process for them too.
They do a very nice job at high school. I mean, actually, all the schools do, all the students really that I've observed really do, do a really nice job taking fruits and vegetables.
And they take advantage of what we set up, the no-thank-you tables. If they do not, you know, they're required to take three of the five items. If they decide that they don't want all of that, then they put the milk and the apple or banana or whatever on the no-thank-you table, and students throughout the course of the day do pick those up and consume those. So it's not like they're throwing away the food.
So if you're hungry, you can go back to that table and grab it.
You can go to the no-thank-you table and grab it for no charge. And so then the second part of the goal, if you want to go ahead and continue through.
So we talked about the reimbursable, the reimbursable verification, that's our goal is to make sure that our meals are being counted correctly, and that the state requires that a reimbursable meal be verified at the point-of-sale. So we have some, one school in particular that an exception was made with ODE, but their exception is not being followed. And so we are working at rearranging their service line a little bit so that we can make sure that that, the meals are being verified before the students put their numbers in for a reimbursable meal. That is, that is state law. It's a law that we have to follow. Production records also is a, we're working on towards compliance. The state says the production records have to say sort of very specific things, and so they have been rearranged a little bit, not anything that the gals haven't been doing all along. They just look a little bit different, and they have to, you know, they have to fill out different boxes a little bit, you know, which is putting them in different places. But like I said, it's something they've been doing all along, and so it's just a matter of just showing them, you know, how to fill them out correctly according to the state guidelines. And the other big thing for, that I feel like that one of the big reasons that we were asked to come to this district was to prepare for our state audit, food service state audit that's going to be happening next, the next school year. And there is quite a bit to do. There is to pass a National School Lunch Program audit. There are a lot of requirements, a lot of everything from our recipes have to be written exactly, perfectly written, the information that we, all of the food that we serve, all of the nutrient ingredients, values, everything, all have to be onsite and all accounted for. And then our, and again, our production records have to be filled out correctly, our, all the record, the site claims have to be submitted to the state correctly, everything has to match up. And our menus have to, we have to serve our students what we put on our menus. The state says that if you say you're going to have chicken nuggets on next day, you better have chicken nuggets on that. And they have to be the correct portions. So that's where it is a huge job getting ready for an audit. And so that's, you know, the reason why I'm here, to help this district, you know, get ready for the audit and to pass the audit with plain colors.
What happens if we don't pass it?
There is corrective actions that can be written up, clear down to financial repercussions if they find enough discrepancies or inaccuracies, there can be actual financial repercussions. But the districts that I've helped this year, none of them have, as far as I remember, had financial repercussions. There was just corrective actions that need to be made to bring, you know, two or three things up to compliance. And then, and they give us a certain amount of time, they give us like 30 days, and then they kind of check back with us and visually see that the action's been taken and it's been corrected.
Can you recall, three or four years ago, we had to, or we were denied like $27,000 or something like that, reimbursements for pizza that had too many calories in it or something like that? I mean, is that the kind of thing we're talking about to avoid that?
Yeah, and I can clarify that. It was actually a $20,000 reimbursement sanction that we experienced as a result of the audit four years ago for a few findings.
Now, under a contract with Sadexo, would Sadexo be responsible for, you know, for those performance, if there was a performance gap that cost the district money, would Sadexo be responsible? Maybe that's a.
It's our food service program, so I believe that the Department of Education would see that as a sanction for us.
Right, I'm sure they would hold us accountable, and then whether or not we might have a.
That's a good question.
But that would be a risk management strategy I suppose potentially for the district as well.
Sure. How do you keep track of all, I mean, does each kid come through, do you keep track of, you know, Johnny's getting a meal and Johnny comes back for another meal? Does he have to check in every time he does it, whether it's cash or?
Yes, we have a, we have a program that the district uses, it's called Meal Time, and we have points to observe in each school, and that program does really well. There's always, you know, there's always a risk of students slipping by, but for the most, yeah.
Yeah, I got money on my account, you can't use that.
Yeah, but for the most part, you know, that's, the staff is trained on to, you know.
They know who they are.
They do. So, no, it's, it's a good system.
And then your third goal was trying to maintain a cost-effective food service program and not rely upon the use of general fund dollars. And so there's a little bit of lag time between having your year-end and being able to get the audited numbers from the state. So there's some overlapping figures here. So from July 1 to June 30, the food services received a subsidy of $23,000. And then from January 1 to December 31st, sorry, 2014, as reported to ODE, they received a subsidy of $30,000. So depending on what point in the year you're looking at, is it a calendar year, is it a school year, is it a fiscal year, the numbers are constantly changing. But in speaking of Scott, the district contributes anywhere from, you know, $20,000 to $44,000 in a subsidy over the course of the last several years to our program.
At some point in the year.
Yeah, at some point.
At the end of the year, I think we'd be black or the year.
I don't believe so.
No, if they end up, end up a fiscal year or a calendar year.
You'd never end up black. You're always, you're all.
End up black at the end of one fiscal year in 2014. Do we have a participation target that brings us into the black? Is that what needs to happen, or is there a multitude of things that need to happen?
I mean, I think there's a multitude of things.
Yeah, I got to answer that.
This is John Stone from Sadexo.
So as far as the program performance, there's a couple of different levers that work into that. Currently, you're under a fixed-price contract with us, so you're not charged any more than a set price per meal. So in the past, if cost overruns hit the program, they would be responsible, responsibility to the district. Now they fall on our shoulders to manage that. And then also your commodity credit that we provide the district each month, that's provided on the commodity we receive each month. Participation numbers that we use, we're on target for our participation projections work, and that will bring the program into cost neutrality. I track the program pretty carefully just from my books, I know those are different from the district's books, but with our billing and our commodity credit, just for the month and a half we've been here, we're showing an excess year-to-date, at least from the time that we took over. But again, we won't be able to measure that until the end of the school year is there, and then the measurement really needs to look into, you know, the April, the March time period through the end of the year for the performance of what we've been doing. But, you know, I'm projecting that at least the portion of time that we've been here will show an excess, and then next school year, we should be in the black.
So then we solicited feedback from administrators and students, and let's, you go ahead.
Hey, I just threw in a couple of little pictures. Last week, before I booked this, we started a made-to-order nacho bar at the high school, and so that was just kind of pictured before. And I just wanted to say that was a huge hit with the students. They did have to stand and wait a little bit longer because it's, they are made-to-order, we assemble them, and then students come by and tell us, you know, what they want on their nachos, and then you see all the toppings there. And, and many of the comments from the students were, you know, wow, this is great, to, the wait was totally worth it, to, you know, they were just, they were just excited to see something different, and just a little, you know, more excitement to about the lunch. Anyway, so the, some of the feedback that I got to, we put up here is like, was one of the administrators said that they, in their particular building, they said that they, they believe that their lunch counts and breakfast counts are up, and that is true for most schools. All the feedback on the food is sort of positive from students. I have not heard personally any negative comments, and I did provide tables, comments from principals, I've not personally heard any negative comments from students. Rightfully so, the high school kids are the ones that have not negative comments about the food per se, but just that they can't buy the, you know, entrees, you know, alone separately. Quality's fine, one principal parent said quality is fine from their perspective, haven't heard any negative comments from the students, kids, parents, or staff. One comment from principal, it's probably one negative, would be the salad quality on a salad bar, and they mean as far as, and the ability to offer more produce in the salad bar. And I don't think they meant necessarily quality, but quantity. They, we do have a little, have a few, we have a few less choices on the offering bar, but that is to come into, work towards less waste, because we see when, when there is a lot of different choices on the salad bar. I have heard comments too, that, you know, that the staff sees a lot of stuff in the garbage. Kids tend to, as we all know, their eyes are bigger than their stomachs, and when there's lots and lots and lots of choices, then they, you know, take a little bit of everything and then, you know, take two or three bites and it goes in the garbage. So, and then again, we have to come into compliance with nutrient analysis, and so we've moved away from like, you know, creamy potato salads and macaroni salads and things like that. So we offer, and this is another offering bar that's in one of the grade schools, and so we just wanted to show you some pictures, that they do have a very well-rounded variety of fruits, fresh fruits and vegetables that are offered to the students.
So there's some other issues that I want to talk about. First of all, I just want to say that I think our food service staff has done an amazing job with this transition in the middle of the year. It is very difficult to transition anytime, and then for us to do it in the middle of the year when they're just trying to survive the job, just like a teacher, just trying to survive the job, very rarely do we throw a new curriculum at a teacher in the middle of the year, and that's basically what we did to our food service staff. And so I commend them for the hard work that they're doing, and I hope that they are feeling like they're being heard and listened to, the increasing of hours and the offering of more trainings, and the idea that you're 36 days into it, it's going to be hard, and but with monthly staff meetings and the continued trainings, it's going to get better. And so, you know, some of the things that we need to keep in mind is that regardless of whether we're using a contracted service like Sadexo or we're doing it in-house, we're still using the same food vendors. We buy our chicken nuggets from the same place that we did before. It's the same, you know, United Herschers that is providing us with the food. Some people said, you know, one comment last week was, we served french fries four days last week, and we called it a vegetable. Well, that's what the government calls it. The government calls it a vegetable. They used to call it a starch, now they call it a vegetable. And so when it's paired with whatever it's paired for, paired with, it's part of the acceptable menu approved by the fence. You know, there's a formula through ODE that talks about how much Sadexo can charge us for that service, and that's set by them. It's not something that we can negotiate back and forth and come to an agreement on. The menus do have cart counts and nutritional analysis, there will be, we're working towards the link or the, putting the menus on our site so that not only can parents click on our food service tab or our menu tab at each school and have the menu with the prices, but then also go to the nutritional analysis. For the parent that was concerned about not being able to get, you know, sodium counts and cart counts, that's all done. Sadexo has all of that done. We've already shared that with our nursing staff, and they are very happy with that.
They're thrilled.
The, we use, Sadexo uses a company called Duck Produce, and you can go through and anything in season that you're wanting to order, they tell you exactly where it comes from. We get berries from Brooks, we get apples from Hood River, we get lettuce from, you know, wherever in Washington they grow it. And so whenever it is in season, they buy local. Sadexo is also willing to partner with us in looking at the farm-to-school grant program that ODE has on their website pending, in terms of releasing how to apply for the grant. If we could apply for a grant and receive it, then we would have a person that coordinates that grant, that's part of the funding process, that would then work with Sadexo on bringing those items into our menus. We're able to adjust menu items as well. So for instance, some of the kids said, we don't, I, we're not sure we like this pizza recipe. Sue Ann and the cooks are piloting a different recipe at two schools this next week. If we wanted to say we never wanted to have chicken nuggets again, we could ban them from the menu and find something else. So there is that flexibility to be able to pilot different things that kids might like. And their company also promotes the idea of the use of student feedback panels, so you know, bringing people on board to talk about, how is the food this quarter, what did you think of it, what could we do differently, let's try it. So there is some connection there with kids and ownership for what happens with them. And then finally, we heard of several places that still do their own in-house food services. Dallas did, used to be a partner with Sadexo. Dallas concluded that contract with Sadexo, but currently they partner with Central, and Central's food services manager is Sue Ann, serves as a Sue Ann. So that person is buying for two districts and still providing them with the food. They have, the difference with Dallas now is that. They have, the difference with Dallas now is that their cooks are Dallas School District employees, whereas before with the Sodexo contract, they were not. And McMinnville has an in-service program, but they have a coordinator who has a four-year degree in nutrition. They also have a wellness coordinator, they have catering manager, and one other salary employee to help run the program. And then Oregon Trail, they, they do have an in-house program, who is a former Sodexo manager, and again, a higher wage position because of the degree and the experience. And so, I mean, when I spoke with him on the phone, he, he said, I, I brought all my tricks of the trade from Sodexo, which is good for them, and, and Sodexo is actually proud of that, and that a lot of the people who are running these in-house programs came from their company. But the thing about all three of these districts here is that they have a significant contribution from their general fund, like over a hundred thousand dollars. By the time you look at the different salaries and then subsidized in the house. So, that's, that doesn't meet the goals that you had established.
Can we continue this? Can we start seeing some of the feedback that you get from the parents and students?
Sure, yeah. Absolutely. Yeah.
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 I think that'd be helpful. By the way, fully supporting getting berries from Brooks.
That's great. There's a pie company's coming into town, let's get some to serve. So, again, I just want to commend the hard work that our cooks have been doing. I mean, they've always worked hard, but for some of them who haven't been through a major change like this, I know it's been a, a shock to the system. And it will get better, it will smooth out, and I think that we, you know, can work together to create the kind of food program that we want to have for our district, that we can customize for ourselves.
The other night, we heard a lot of it, heard a little bit about the timing of deliveries on a week, on a Friday and Saturday of the weekend, we have spoilage, and have you looked at, had a chance to look into that?
Yeah, you know, and that was, that was just initially kept coming in and, and just, you know, bumps in the road like anything else. I mean, there were, and there still are, and, and we're still, you know, next year, hopefully in September, well, you know, most will be smoothed out, but some of, some of the, you know, system, the way it was, you know, done before, was just a little crazy, and so we're trying to just shift things around, and consequently, you know, not everything's always perfect the right time, first time around. So, as far as spoilage on that, before spring break, I didn't know, I don't know exactly what happened there, but I do know I had a couple of schools that staff were not available to let the drivers in so that they could properly put things away. And so, and I think that, I think things got, just got missed, you know, because they were, you know, there was just oversights, you know, as far as who was supposed to be where at what time, you know, to put stuff away and things like that. But we don't have, you know, a lot of, a lot of spoilage going on. But that, that was just a, a leakage on, before spring break. But for the one part, we're getting all the delivery, dates and locations in fact worked out. And like I said, the only new, the only new vendor we have is Duck, rest of Cisco and Spring Valley and France are the same vendors that you've always been using.
So the complaints I mainly heard, and from the high school and then, you know, just in general too, are about the portion sizes for what the kids are telling us. But there's not a lot we can do about that, but they can get an entree and then line up with as much salad.
Absolutely.
And fruit as they want and things like that.
And they're, and, and, you know, students, and they don't know this, but students are welcome to go back to the salad bar if they're still hungry and get more.
And then about the pricing too, is there, are there plans to maybe try it all apart? Peop, or something at the high school, or to?
So it would be that snack, smart, smart snack.
Smart, yeah.
So, so they could buy items for cheaper or less price, but they're going to be smaller.
Yeah. Which, so.
And, and again, the.
It might give some kids more options.
They could, right, right.
And that is something we definitely will look at, because we do have that in most of our districts, most of our districts, we do have that. But here, just to get the program into compliance with the national school lunch program, you know, we had to, we have to change a mentality a little bit, we, you know, actually a lot of the students. And so, once they, they, students understand, you know, the program that we have, and then we can initiate and introduce some of the other things that are available.
Is the no-thanks table just at high school, or do you have?
We have it at all schools.
One thing that a staff member, not a food service staff member, but another staff member at the high school told me to just throw out an idea, and I thought it might be a good one, to, if you have some kind of pictures or guides to post to show kids, okay, this is what you can get for your three-dollar entree. You know, your entree and then salad, you know, just to kind of, so they can visualize a little more, maybe take a little confusion.
Yeah, perfectly.
Kind of.
Yeah.
So my recommendation would be for, at your June board meeting for you to renew the contract with Sodexo for another year, so that we can really have a solid gear under our elbows of the program, to see how we can make this work for us.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Still with the serve?
Yeah.
Can you hear okay?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Has moved.
Okay. Slater Campus Project, scope of work and cost estimates, Dan Hess.
Hi, how are you guys?
Good.
You have more caper for our point? And guess what?
We can move in.
You gotta move in.
Yeah, sorry about that, he does have a hard point.
We need the exercise.
Just the one on the right. On the, the other right.
Do you have them all?
No, that's good.
Is that?
Okay, so.
Hey, Andy.
Uh, yeah.
It's that light, I can't see that presentation, there's some, I can see the more, but there was some, I can see it fine, but some, do you turn the lights different?
Yeah, we just turned the lights, the front lights off. Or if you may, turn them all off, do you? We're gonna turn them all off, or, does that help?
No, it was something before, I could read it perfectly, but then all of them.
I think it's a skylight. We're gonna put you a little closer.
I'll just listen, Andy.
Okay, well, that should be a little bit better. All right, thanks.
All right, so I have an update from the report I gave at the last board meeting with some more detailed information, some costs, and an actual.
Have you speak into the microphone, please?
I'm gonna put you close to him.
Here, he asked us to speak into the microphone. That'll help.
There you go, you should hear him real good now. Very well.
Hi, Er.
Hello.
So, that's a typo. Last time I was here was Port 27, I just realized that when I was sitting, waiting to come up here. But anyway, so since then, we've had, the city has had a traffic impact analysis completed. We've reviewed the Slater building findings that we and our consulting engineers did with, with the district, with Andy and Joel, and did a final review of the educational program, again with Andy and Joel, and then started to get information from modular building companies. So we've got a variety of information from vendors as well as manufacturers, which has helped us put together a budget for that portion of the project. And then we sat down with the city, with the fire department, and with Darrell Jones, the building official, and talked more in detail about what we can do in this project to bring it up to code and what their expectations are. So the big, the big thing we're all waiting for, the big wild card, was the traffic impact summary. And the good news was, there really was only one major issue that they found after doing their analysis, and that was a problem at James and Pine with too much traffic at peak hours. So that's good, that was the only, you know, we were concerned there'd be more, and so that, that's good. And then they gave three options. One is to do physical upgrades at the intersection, which would be as much as two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars perhaps. The second option is to stagger the start times of the middle school and high school, so perhaps one starts a half an hour later than the other, so you don't have quite as much traffic all at the same time. And then the third option was to encourage the use of brown for the middle school traffic. And I put minimal cost for that, because there'll be a little bit of maybe striping, and we'll show you on a site diagram we have how that might work. But essentially, the last two options are, you know, pretty doable, obviously, and the, the idea of using brown for middle school traffic seems the most practical for the district.
Does the city buy into this? Did they agree to the findings?
They've reviewed it, and they've talked to Andy about it, and I think they're on board with it.
I should know this, but which was brown? That was good when it goes.
Yeah, that's the one perpendicular to Slater, like just out here.
Okay. Yeah, right out here. Okay. Outward and left, take a.
Sorry.
So just to recap, the last time we talked, these were sort of the big issues that we're looking at in terms of what needs to be done to the existing building. Possibly subdivide the multipurpose room to create a cafeteria and an elective classroom. Leave most of the existing flooring, do some ceiling repair, miscellaneous cabinet and countertop work as needed, and a little bit of painting, but we're not, at this point, we don't have budget to repaint the whole building. At least we haven't figured that into our budget. Mechanical, improvements to the multipurpose wing, ventilation upgrade to gym, we, Andy and Joel and I kind of toss that around, but with a full day use of middle school students, it seems like it's an important thing to do.
What's, what's the issue in the gym?
It just, it almost has no ventilation.
We have a full day of high school students, or.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's.
I'm in there, I'm in there a fair amount, although it's not occupied all that much.
Yeah.
Well, I think when we shut off the boiler, that killed the ventilation system, and then we added just a minimum.
It's just these.
Yeah.
Unit heaters.
Right, right, but those are added.
Right.
Yeah, those are added afterwards because we were just using it occasionally.
I can verify, yeah, we, we actually did, did not shut off the ventilation unit. I think that just the sheer volume of ventilation unit is nineteen-sixty-eight standard, and it's not sufficient if we were to, to look at current standards. We do have two ceiling suspended natural gas units in there, you're right, Tom, and that's, that's the heat source, since we did shut it down the boiler.
Right, okay.
And then electrical, the electrical distribution system's pretty good throughout the building. We also recommend a lighting upgrade in the gym, some minor light fixture replacement in a few rooms. And then the kitchen needs a variety of sort of small infrastructure improvements. We're, we can't really confirm that the cold storage rooms are satisfactory till really the building gets powered up, that they worked before, and so the assumption is they should probably work again.
Can you explain the lighting upgrade in the gym?
Uh, there, uh.
Is that just to bring up current standards, or is there something wrong?
I know that half the bulbs are out, but.
Yeah.
I think there's no.
Joel, right there.
That, that gym has malala lighting in it currently. The bulbs that are in there are compliant with the new law, but they are no more available to burn.
Oh, I see.
So the, so what's there is compliant today, but as soon as they burn out.
Thank you.
For classroom technology, the services site is good, there's fiber to the site, but there's not really any wireless throughout the school. And there's some equipment at Eugene Field that could be moved over to Slater, so that's good. So code and life safety, the, these are the things that we kind of agreed upon with Darrell. It definitely needs a new fire alarm system, it really doesn't have much of a fire alarm system in most of the building. There needs to be a fire sprinkler upgrade at the multipurpose wing, and then exterior egress doors from classrooms and the other parts of the building. So the option that Darrell gave us was, you can either sprinkler the building, or if each classroom has a door to the outside, then he won't require sprinklers, because the classrooms typically don't have a door to the outside right now. So that's potentially a, a significant cost savings. I count nine new doors that need to be added to the building. So we've included cost for that. Egress lighting, there really isn't adequate emergency egress lighting. Good news also is it looks like there's plenty, now that we've done an accurate toilet count. Seems like there's plenty of toilet fixtures in the building and plumbing fixtures, so I don't think we need to worry about adding any of those. And then the other issue is, at the nineteen-thirty-eight building where it touches the existing building, we need to do some code upgrades. We need to replace some of the doors, they, they're, some that meet ninety-minute requirements and some that don't, so we have to replace those. And then at the, at the east end of the building, it's still wide open, and that needs to be closed off with a, with a firewall. So we, we've included cost for that.
It's very reasonable.
Yeah, I thought it was good. So the, the current budget proposal that we've come up with has budget categories for project soft costs, off-site work, modular buildings, remodel upgrade, community routes, and then Mark Twain covered play, and then also a project contingency.
What do you feel is your level of accuracy there?
It, it's conservative.
Thirty percent, true?
I, I would say that the budgets are, are, you know, I would, I feel pretty good about them, seventy percent accurate. But we've padded the numbers to play it safe.
Sure, so plus minus thirty, that's not unusual at this stage.
Yeah, so, and again, these are budgets, they're not estimates, we haven't designed anything yet, we're just looking at sort of conceptually what needs to be done, putting some quantities to it, and then some unit costs and other inflation factors and, and coming up with numbers that seem to make sense, so.
So on the, the off-site work, that's the, that's the SDCs, or the.
Well, yeah, so let's, the, I think the project soft costs are self-explanatory, they're design fees, permits, miscellaneous things like that. Off-site work, so the city, in addition to the code upgrades, there's some, it's not SDCs, but there's some work on the site they're gonna require. And we've met with them once to talk about it, and the, the big ticket items are the big things they care about. We're sidewalks along James Street, all the way like up past the baseball field. New, replace four fire hydrants in the neighborhood that serve the school, and then replace some, or create some curb cuts like at Slater and James Street, where there's not a good ADA curb cut at the sidewalk. So I think there's three of those, there's four fire hydrants, and there's the sidewalks, which we've priced it in two chunks. One, just in front of the school, and then one in front of the athletic fields. And I still think maybe there's a little bit of room for negotiation with the city in terms of, do you really need to do that last piece of it, but.
Good, because our, our initial estimate was a million dollars for all that.
Right, so.
And that had, you know, generally estimates, they usually go up from there.
Right.
And the city could go the other way.
And then modular buildings, so let me fast forward. We're, we're thinking at this point that we need eight classrooms, which is four modular buildings. So there's one modular at Eugene Field that has two classrooms. There's one modular that, it seems that you can acquire from the city of Silverton at low cost.
Is that the one we were getting back?
The problem with these is even if it's free, it costs a lot of money to get.
Yeah, we need to work.
Yeah.
And then we're assuming two refurbished modulators from a vendor. So we've had some discussions with some vendors, and, you know, to buy a new modular and have it installed with two classrooms is somewhere in the realm of a hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand to a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars is what they're saying. So, to play it safe, and, and what they're saying about used modulators is, again, it's, you know, it's, if it's available, great, you know, you just don't. know, it's, if it's available, great, you know, you just don't know what the price is going to be. So I'm assuming $100,000 for a used modular. That's being conservative, maybe could do better.
Andy, do you have a cabinet in South Albans that would be in theirs, if they had pull-in because of Park?
No, that's a, that's a good reminder. Joel's been doing a lot of work on, on trying to access modulators. And we have found a couple of school districts that have them potentially available within the next year. And that's another one to look at.
There's Portland and Beaverton are spending a lot of money on that.
So the Mark Twain covered play structure, that's, it's not just the building, there might be some, usually when you build one of those, you have to do something with the roof drains and connect them to storm system somehow. And then community routes, again, we're thinking two modular units, four classrooms total. I'll show you in a minute the proposed location and a new sidewalk from the James Street parking lot to get to those modulators. So to go back to the costs, with a project contingency of about 4%, which is, you know, not luxurious, but that's, I think, what this project can afford. You get right below 2.5 million. And there's still a lot of room, wiggle room in all this, primarily in the modular buildings. We just, you know, hopefully you can do better than what I budgeted on those. That would be, that would be very helpful. So the last slide is, we took a look at how this might lay out. And one of the main concepts is that the community routes school, although they're still on the campus, they have a certain separation from the middle schoolers. So they're kind of in their own place. There would be a new sidewalk that would connect to the, like I said, the James Street parking area. The idea for the middle school, conceptually, is that you've got two halves of a building that aren't connected. So we felt like there's got to be, if you want it to feel like a school, we're going to have to do something that ties it all together. And the idea to get from the gymnasium side to the multipurpose side is the gymnasium's going to be a hallway, the south side of the gym. It's already used that way a lot anyway and it just seems to make sense. And the toilet rooms are along there anyway, so I think, you know, it's sort of creative problem solving, but it seems like the way to go. The idea is then you would go out on a sidewalk that would take you to the multipurpose wing and out there, there'd be sort of a plaza that the other modulators are ranged around. Maybe create a lawn area and then also a hard surface play area. In terms of the budget, what we have is a little bit of money for the sidewalk and then the rest of it is just pretty colors on a graphic that you see. So I didn't include anything for a plaza, I didn't include anything for a lawn. I think all these things can definitely happen, but part of the creative problem solving that Andy and Joel and I have talked about is, you know, things that the district already has that can be reused, possible volunteer opportunities, donations from community members, things like that. I think the plaza could be really cool. I think that could be something, and the walkway that links the buildings doesn't just have to be a five-foot sidewalk. You could do something. We could work with the middle school students and staff next year to create some ideas. You could get donations of benches or picnic tables or things. You could paint the existing asphalt in a fun and interesting way. You can make something out of it so that when the kids move in, it really felt like it was their school. And then, so to talk about the traffic routing, you see Brown Street up at the upper right. So the idea is that parent drop-off would happen in this big sort of unused parking area adjacent to this building. So parents would pull in, you know, there's going to have to be some way of routing people, you know, some, I don't know, fencing or jersey barriers or something, signage, striping, and then give people plenty of room to pull in and area to drop the kids off, and then they pull out and go back down Brown Street.
Would you really nice repaint that?
I'd say that parking lot's about...
It needs help, it needs help, yeah.
How do you keep it from going down Slater? Instead of just going, how do you get it to go back down Brown Street?
Well, you, you know, there's, probably there's no way to stop them, except, you know, except to put, you know, a gate at the end of Slater's.
Hard to pick them up there every morning.
But I think...
I could address that a little bit, Dan. I mean, as a consideration by the city, the city, by the way, is a full partner in this and they've demonstrated some real collaboration. One suggestion, and I'm certain there are others, would be certain hours of the day, as an example, let's say between seven and nine o'clock, if you come down Slater Street, it's right turn only. And that's regulated. You can't turn left to go south on James Street. So if you're going to go down Slater, your only option is to go north on James up at Jefferson Street. So I think as long as the city has, is receptive to ideas and we're a willing player to do what we can with signage and communication, then we can help mitigate that intersection, which is really what the ultimate goal.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, they're going to expect us to use Brown Street, so that's...
So to encourage parents to drop kids off there, for one thing, we've realigned or decided to put the buses, the bus drop-off on Slater. So in previous diagrams we've done for the site over the past few years, the idea was always that the bus drop-off would be within the campus. And now we're thinking, no, let's not waste precious space with the bus route, let's put them on Slater. The main entry's going to be right there anyway.
Wherever it always used to be.
Right, and with the buses there, it'll discourage parents from trying to drop their kids out there. The second thing is at the top of the multipurpose area, just below the, the district office, is a little area that we're suggesting could be a drop-off plaza or a waiting plaza. Again, maybe with some benches, some concrete repair, you could, a little bit of landscaping, you could make it into a nice place if people felt like it's a good place for their kids to wait for them or to drop them off on their way to school. There's also some thought about fencing, and we haven't really got into that too much, but need to secure the site. And I think there's some concerns about the community routes keeping their area a little bit secure from the middle schoolers, and that can be a help us pretty easily. So that's the last slide. And the purpose of this presentation is to get feedback from the board. So if you guys have comments or questions, we're going to prepare a final report that we'll deliver to Andy in the next week or two. But if there's any questions or things you think we missed or that you'd like more information on, that's the comment.
How's, how's community routes using for bathrooms? So do they go outside, use the ones at the snack bar there?
Yes.
Okay. Are they upgraded at all?
Well, we would, we have a little bit of money in there to do a little bit of upgrade.
Just one comment, it's encouraging to me how the portion of this, it seems to be an investment into a longer-term use than the modular portion of it, which will be a, you know, more quickly shorter-term use. A lot of, a lot of the budget does strike me as something that'll have a longer lasting... I like the plaza area there, and I mean, that's something the kids could, you know, kids and staff could, uh...
Yeah, I think you could, that can be a real community project. That could be something that can make it feel like it's their school rather than just somewhere they have to move to.
Three blocks of modulars now is actually something that...
Yeah.
Roughly, how many square feet or what are the dimensions of a two-classroom modular?
Twenty-eight and sixty-four.
I mean?
Twenty-eight and sixty-four. Is there anything in the budget for, for, I heard, covered area of the plaza or anything like that?
Not currently, no.
Is the building wired?
Yeah, I see, that's where I did everything with it.
There is a little bit of money, by the way, in the budget for a little bit of seismic bracing on the 1938 wing where it touches the multipurpose and where it touches the classrooms on the west, on the east and west ends of the building. We haven't designed anything yet, but there's some simple things that could be done, just bolting some steel angles and a little bit of bracing to shore that up so that in a moderate seismic event, it would still be relatively safe.
Go inward instead of out.
Well, yeah, or just not move.
Right, or that too, yes.
Very nice.
Other questions for Dan?
All right, thank you, Dan.
You got to move again, or should I just stay?
I think...
Erv, still there?
Yeah, but I have a comment quick.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Well, I was just wondering if they had considered, if you come down Brown Street and you turn left on Slater, at the end of Slater, before you get to James Street, if they had considered like cutting out in that existing yard to make a big cul-de-sac so the buses could come down there and turn around and then head back down Brown Street instead of going through that parking lot?
Buses or the parents, or...
Well, either.
I, well, they're...
Take that covered area between the multipurpose room and the wing and put a road right through there and go in the back by the stadium. Just another option.
Well, I think, Erv, to be honest, the, the idea of building some sort of turnaround at the end of Slater is probably not something you can afford in this budget. And maybe, I don't know how the buses are routing, where they go from, where they start and where they go from, but do they, do they come from the high school and go to the middle school, or do they go from the middle school to the high school? What does that typical?
Uh, both. Sometimes they go from the middle school to the elementary school. And, and what we can do, while we can't control the direction of the traffic flow of, of parents, of course, we can control the traffic flow of buses. And so if we rerouted buses down Slater and onto James, North James, then, you know, they would have to do a loop around, let's say, if they were to go down, come back over to the high school or, or head up to Mark Twain or something. So that's very much controllable for us to keep the buses out of that James and Pine Street intersection, at least to the, to the degree that they are, because we currently have buses that use that intersection. And I think the intent would be not to increase that, that concentration with this addition.
Okay, all right. Anything else, Erv?
No, it's just going to be a tight turn for those buses to get into that parking lot. We have to do some fence, uh...
Well, the buses aren't going there.
Oh, yeah, the buses are not going in the parking lot. That would be the parent drop-off in that area only. The buses would be, would remain on Slater.
Okay.
Just, just like they used to do.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Dan.
Mr. Sheriff, I can just comment on one thing. Dan, can we get to the topic? When, okay, thanks. When, when a concept comes out, and I don't have a lot of time of experience with this, but I can tell you that when, when concepts have been presented in the past, some people are very quick to say that's the final plan, or at least some, sometimes that's, that's the outcome. So I think it's real important that we understand this is just that. It's a preliminary concept for what it could look like. There's, there's certainly nothing final here, but it does take into consideration that the priorities that you've identified in order to establish this as a, as a middle school as well as a community reach charter school. So it's first stab at that, just for, maybe less for you and more for the public to be certain that it's not something that we would share out there as a final plan. It's clearly a concept at this point.
Yeah, okay.
I think one other comment I would share with the board is, in working with the city for a lot of years, I think we have a really good group there now as far as people who would, again, be full partners and work with us in, in making this happen reasonably, what that's worth.
Well, yeah, it kind of looks like it, because like I said, I was really concerned about, yes, about the system development charges. You know, we originally, we originally thought maybe one hundred million. It seems to be far less than that. It was very nice. Yeah, I don't think it would have happened.
Some other options we set.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, Andy May, economic forecast and school funding update.
Yeah, just some additional information. Each of you received an update from me late last week when the, when the state economic forecast was, was released. It's, it's the good news. There is good news, it's relative, relatively good news anyway, and that is that the forecast shows that the economy is continuing to improve and actually improve beyond the estimates that the state had assumed at that time. With that said, there are a couple of dynamics that I want to share with you and then move on to some additional information. And the first is that the, the forecast, at this point anyway, taking into consideration that it will likely trigger the, the state income tax kicker, the personal kicker, which equates to 400 and somewhat million dollars that, that as income tax folks will experience in relief over the course of the next year with their, with their income taxes. With that said, there still is estimated to be about $105 million that will be added to the state school fund in support of K-12 in the state of Oregon. That brings the total from about 7.255 billion to 7.36 billion and, which is not the 7.5 billion that we were hoping for, to be able to, to provide schools the breathing room that they need in order to fund the next two years. So with our best estimate at this point, because it's really about what that means for Silver Falls, while it still has to be routed through the funding formula, and it's routed through the state funding formula after the final decision. Keep in mind that both houses haven't approved this, the governor hasn't signed it yet, but all indicators are that the school, the state school fund will get the additional 105 million. So for Silver Falls School District, we estimate that to be $175,000-ish. Could be 150, could be 200, we really don't know at this point because there are too many variables that are involved. And frankly, there, there's still some legislative discussion that needs to occur. And with the triggering of the state personal kicker, there's also the, the triggering of the state corporate kicker. When the corporate kicker is triggered, rather than those, those dollars going back to corporations like they do with personal income tax, the corporate dollars are actually sent directly to the state school fund. But the use of those dollars is totally determined by the legislature and the governor. So we don't know what's going to happen with that, those dollars. You have, there are plenty of people, especially education support folks across the state, encouraging the legislature to use the, the corporate revenue in addition to any other revenue they can from the latest economic picture, and, and good news, in order to get schools to that 7.5 billion level. But I, I can't tell you what that's going to be, nobody can tell you what that's going to be at this point. I think the legislature would like to see an improved K-12 budget by early June anyway, but that's still not finalized at this point. So there's still some unknowns, but I feel pretty confident saying that the additional 105 million equating to about 175,000 for Silver Falls School District will occur. So with that said, there's still some, there's still a couple of things that need to be, I think you need to take into account, and I'm encouraging you to have some conversation about how you would like to address this. It's not the estimated 350,000 that we were hoping would occur if we reached the 7.5 billion dollar threshold. If that were to occur, there were three goals that, that I shared with you during budget committee meetings and during a couple of board meetings that I, that I'd like you to consider in, in a prioritized fashion with the additional revenue. One of them was to be able to fund, or at least sufficiently through our district formula, provide our schools additional revenue so that we can at least address, if not fully replace, some of the positions in the district that were reduced or eliminated. That was number one. Second to that was funding for a school resource officer with the city of Silverton in cooperation with the city of Silverton, that's about an $82,000 hit. And then the third was really contingent upon how much money you had left over, but the third would be to keep those monies in reserve for you to address the needs of the school district. And when we spoke as a, as a budget committee, you heard me talk about your budget and fund balance, which is currently at 6%, but it is something that you have indicated some interest in, something that I encourage you to do, to throw that, especially as we help address the facility needs of this district and other unanticipated costs, including the potential PERS hit that we still don't have a good grasp on how much that would be. So if you visualize this second, for a second, we, we were hoping for the $350,000 when we identified those three priorities. We believe we're going to get half that. So would those three priorities still be, be at play, especially knowing now that we have the new information about beginning of the 2017, 18 fiscal year, you're going to have to deal with some increase related to a recent Supreme Order Supreme Court decision related to a PERS funding. What we do know, let me just talk a little bit about funding. What we, I want to tell you what we do know and what we don't know about, about the PERS rates, because this, I think, will help your conversation. We don't know the rates. The rates will be established sometime, fully established, formally established in The rates will be established sometime, fully established, formally established in the 2016 school year or fiscal year for the 2017, 19 PERS by any period. They set rates per, the Board, PERS Board sets rates every two years. We should have an indication as early as this fall, because the PERS Board meets every few months. They're clear this is going to be a topic of discussion, and we should have some early indicators by their September meeting this year about what those rates could be for the 2017, 19 year, so that will be helpful. We don't know the value, at this point anyway, of the past pension due to retirees based upon recent, like, the PERS decision. We don't have those figures, and that's something that the PERS Board has to give us as well. We also don't know, or we're uncertain about what any potential legislative action could be. The legislature during this term or during their annual session could choose to take some action. I think it's probably less likely to occur simply because any action or the most recent action they've taken has now been overturned by the Supreme Court, but the legislature still could take action. And the PERS Board could also take action. If you recall a few years ago, when the PERS rates were set, the PERS Board took into account a consideration over the course of a couple of biennial periods in order to soften the blow, which is school districts and other public entities. And so that could also occur here. However, the state legislative fiscal office estimates the impact to be as high as a five and a half percent increase. And that's, again, across the board. Keep in mind that there are tier one and tier two rates to be set. There are also offset rates, which is the most recent legislation related to new employees within school district and other public entities. So we don't know exactly what that's going to be, but there are estimates that they're about five and a half percent of payroll. What we do know, we do know is that we have some local variables, such as collective bargaining impact with both associations. Each of those expire in June of 2017, and we found some real cooperation with each of the associations when we've bargained difficult things like this in the past. That's going to be a difficult thing to bargain again, but we do know that we have two years remaining in our current collective bargaining agreements. Those are set, so those are predictable. Those can be planned for in beginning of the 2017 years, when the rate increases occur is also the time that a new collective bargaining agreement for each group comes into play. We also have a PERS actuarial unfunded liability side account, in other words, to help mitigate the impact of PERS. You recall, and I remember every detail about this, but just prior to 2008, the school district went through some PERS refunding and to help offset the cost. It's a little bit of a gamble with that, but it worked for this school district because you were able to actually save dollars that you would have otherwise applied toward PERS rates by borrowing money against those in order to apply the interest earned on your PERS investment to help offset the cost of, or to mitigate actually the cost of the PERS rates. That will be in effect in 2017 as well. And I do want to just share briefly that there's been some recent comments, I know you've heard from some folks about, you know, could we use some of the money that would have otherwise gone or would, is scheduled to go to the Slater project to help offset this? Well, there's some control over that. Some of it is very specific. As an example, your construction excise tax revenue, that's, you're required to target that toward facility improvement or debt service toward facility improvement. You don't have a choice on that. It's about seventy-five thousand dollars a year, and if you recall that single sheet that you provided last month, that's part of, or a portion of the revenue used to help offset the cost of a loan for this project. Property sales, clearly those are, those are board decisions about what you do with that revenue. However, if you take your past practice into account and you take the fact that you're generating revenue from property, that revenue in turn has been used to reinvest in property facilities. And so that makes sense, and I think from the public standpoint, that just makes sense. And so that's why it's also part of the scope of work for funding for this project is that you use the future property sales or, excuse me, the remaining land sales contracts in order to help offset the cost of this law. So could you use some Slater revenue? Sure, if the board took action to do that. I wouldn't encourage it, and I, and I think that would be a questionable practice based upon what you have said in motion at this point. So with, with so many variables still at play, what I'm encouraging you to do at this time, and nobody necessarily likes to hear this, but is to wait a little bit longer. You have an estimated a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars coming into play. When the priorities were set for you related to replacing positions as school resource officer, and third being building up your reserves, it was prior to us hearing that the reserves, or excuse me, that the PERS decision had been made. With that PERS now, the decision being made, I still see those as three priorities for your consideration, but I really believe number three needs to jump back up to number one. And that hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars you need to keep to bank and you need to reserve for the potential PERS impact. You also have next year to do the same thing when you're doing your budgeting. And of course, there's so many variables about funding for next year related to enrollment, to the economy, just a variety of things. So I think it'd be prudent on your part to hold off at this point, as much as I hate to say that, because I'd love to see replacement of those positions and I'd love to see a school resource officer back in this district, but with the latest news, I don't think you're in a good position to do that. So food for thought, and I'll turn it back over to you folks, Mr. Chair.
Any discussion?
I completely agree with you. You mentioned the five and a half percent increase. In terms of dollars, what does that mean?
If you take a five, five to five and a half percent of our current payroll, we're talking a million plus.
Yeah, I agree too, Andy. And like you said, I love to see an SRO position. I think that could be a great benefit for kids, but at this time, it's probably, should wait, hold off a little bit. One thing, I know we've talked about sale of the Eugene Field property, and we're going to get an appraisal done on that, but I think we need to, need to really keep that in the forefront of our minds to possibly move forward with that and also really consider the north end of the Mark Twain property also. Those are two pieces we could generate some revenue off of that could be a good thing to do in my, as far as I'm concerned, which could help offset some of the Slater costs, you know, and then which will leave more for some of the other stuff, so.
No, I agree, keep the, reserve the one seventy-five to offset PERS is probably the wisest thing to do.
Yeah, as Andy was giving his talk, I was wondering where the conclusion was going to come relative to these three goals. That was exactly where I was feeling I would land, and so I was, I'm here, so I'm sure. Well. Thanks, Andy. Anything else, guys? Okay. One other quick item under discussion items. During the talk about the roofing contract, we had talked about the procurement process and if we possibly need to, need to look into that a little bit to see if there's any way we could do it differently to avoid some of the things that happened with the roofing contract.
Yeah, yeah.
This is something Tom brought up, has brought up. Just a couple of quick ideas. If the board even thinks that's necessary, that's, that's one part. Wally had mentioned possibly having a couple of board members meet with Andy and Joel, kind of a subcommittee type of thing, just to look through the whole process and see if there's any changes that could be made, rather than having it be a whole board discussion and a whole board thing to work on, which, which I personally like that because we have had so much on our plate lately. This is something that could be time-consuming that I don't know if the whole, it's necessary for the whole board to work on. And another thing that, that we're planning on doing anyway is with at least three new board members coming on in July, we'll, we're going to have our annual summer board retreat work session, actually. It's not really a retreat, in case there's any potential new board members here. Don't get your hopes up. But, but, and that's something we will probably possibly bring OSBA in to talk about board roles and some things like that, and this could be very well incorporated into that. So I don't want to talk about the process tonight or any specifics, but I just want to get a feeling of which way we'd like, kind of like to go with this or if we even need to go anywhere, so. Ideas?
Well, I've got mixed feelings about whether anything needs to be done or not. You know, I think, like, I tend to fall in the spectrum of being an oversight board as the OSBA would encourage us to be versus being with our hands in every, every detail of data management. And I know everybody has a little different place they fall, and so for me, I don't see a big problem. It hasn't been a problem. I haven't viewed it as a problem in the four years that I've been a member. So I think the only thing that I could see that I would do, and this is getting into specifics, I apologize for that, but the state of work and standard construction contract specifications, as well as the ODOT standard specifications, have a large section, a section that's termination for public convenience. And I've got contractors that come to me all the time, they're so mad because of bid spend, or rebid or whatever, and they have no recourse. And so from the standpoint of the entity, it puts you in a good position if you wanted to get out of, in a, you know. So the flip side of that is always been, well, if you've got a process that doesn't really bind you to anything, then are you really going to get people to, contractors come bid? Are there going to be enough people interested in doing work? You know, state of working doesn't have any problem, ODOT doesn't have any problem. I think if that gets abused by a smaller district, you know, the word gets out that you're, you know, don't waste your time with that. So it's a double-edged sword, but anyways, again, for me, big picture, I don't know that anything needs to be done. I wouldn't hurt to have a committee to have a couple of board members to review the process to be educational if nothing else, so.
I would kind of agree with, I'll sort of.
Yeah, no, I, well, yeah, yeah, I, I think that just for the educational part of it would be handy, because I, my, probably the crux of my gripe with that was that staff sent us down a path and we essentially had to vote yes on it. You know, we need to have a way, an Owens salute, and it just, you know, there's, there's always a way out, something else, so. That was something like that, but a good review of the process, and I would love that.
Yeah, I would agree with all until the, the point that that's, in my mind, the specifics of all that is why we hired Joel.
Right.
And Joel does a great job, and I don't think it's the board's role to look into all the intricate specs and everything on every contract we, every RFP we send out.
No.
That's just not our role. And so I would, you know, I would support a couple of board members and then review it at our board work session or whatever. Wally, anything?
Anything really to add? I agree pretty much what's been said tonight. I don't think we have a problem either, but this, this last roofing project, there's enough churn on it, I think it warrants a couple of board members just take a look at the process, make sure that there's agreement, that there's, there's no issues there.
Yeah, in between.
Erv, any ideas?
Well, yeah, I've been, you know, I've been, I've been listening for, what, the last two or three meetings about all this discussion, and I've been trying to listen. And I got ahold of the Senate's specifications, and it was embarrassing to me how clear, how detailed that specification booklet was. It took me approximately a half an hour to go through the entire booklet. There's a hundred and twelve pages. It is, everything that was pointed wrong is clear. Joel Smallwood, the point of contact is on page four. It just goes page after page, and it even talks about, on page sixty-seven, it talks specifically about being fair to all suppliers. Everything is detailed. I don't think, I want to waste one more meeting on this. I am so impressed with how Joel handled this whole thing. I told somebody, I don't know if you've watched ice skating, but I think Joel landed a triple axel backflip.
He's Joel.
I don't even know if Joel's there tonight.
He is there.
He is, he's smiling.
He said, "That's why my back sore."
But the format that we have, it is a standard format. It worked. It's just a sad situation that we had to listen to all of this non-factual information that was presented to the public, and it, it's just embarrassing to me. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, thanks, Erv. So what do you guys, do you want to have?
I do.
Do you want to have a?
Wally?
I could do it, but I don't have time.
Okay, well.
Probably till this fall or late summer. Is that going to impact?
It's not something we, I mean.
You're not going to have any, any more RFPs being published here for roofing contracts, that's for sure. I mean, there'll be, there'll be some going out for, for contractors for the Slater campus, but.
If there's questions about them, they could always go talk to Joel personally also.
How much time would it, would it take, is it to do all this? I guess up to the board. I mean, I don't know about how much, how many questions you have. I don't know, yeah. What information you're, I suppose a meeting or two, maybe with a couple of board members to visit with Joel.
Probably a couple, two-hour meetings, I would guess, if you can dive into details.
Go through the process, review some of the legal procedures behind it, what we have to do, what we're required to do, go from there, and then report back to the board.
And Tim, just for the public information, I have not spoke with Joel since any of this has taken place. This is, I've done this merely on my own and have checked it out, so Joel doesn't even know I did it.
Okay, thanks, Erv.
I could, I could in a couple months.
Let's, yeah, we'll talk.
Why don't we leave it, Tom and Wally are interested, you guys can just arrange it for whatever, whatever works out.
Yeah, we'll do.
And, but then we can always, you know, I still, at our summer work session, extended one, have OSBA come in, do some just board roles and things like that. And this could be thrown into that if you guys are done by then, or if not, we can just do our members, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good idea, Tim. I think OSBA, that, that is probably more time well spent in defining the board role and what we're to expect from each of us.
Yeah, okay. Okay, anything else? You guys think of anything?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's it for tonight. For our regular session, we're going to take a break adjourned to executive session under ORS 192660 for a superintendent evaluation. Thank you for coming, everyone.